Would have to agree with me on is adding maybe a third community meeting possibly at Los Las Vegas schools, so something in the western section of Atherton to kind of get that outreach throughout Atherton.
So we have in C five conduct two public meetings to present the draft report, one to the following body, one to the town council, and you're wanting to add another one to the.
Third in the western section at Los Las Vegas is something that we can coordinate and work with.
Would that not be part of the workshops that the CCAC would be going to out in the community more than?
It wouldn't be the work, it wouldn't the scope of the issue. What would your thinking say? Pre or post? It's probably a pre, so.
That would be part of the scope.
Yeah. Okay.
That would be up here.
And I think the idea of geographically having different sessions, one in the west side, maybe one in the park, and then one in here, or something like that, makes all kinds of sense. Right, thank you. That's it for me, Matt.
Okay, thank you. Council Vice Mayor Carlson.
Yeah, I, if I had my brothers here, I'd like to get the, my view of the town center is it ought to be something low key as opposed to something massive.
Okay.
In the overview, about the overview.
Yeah.
That, I don't know how the rest of you council members feel about that, but it seems to me that in keeping with where it's located, putting something massive, or somebody's thinking it ought to be something massive, so Atherton can make a statement, I think was, you know, wasted time.
Right.
I think it ought to be something more low key. And also that it ought to encourage casual use and not just be focusing on the meetings, the formal meetings and things like that. I'd also like to remove the word expanded in front of library and the bottom of that overview, we don't, we don't make any kind of a statement before police department or others, I don't see the need for it right there.
So delete expanded library, just save library.
Library, sure, just like the rest of the things here. And in terms of background, sometimes staff needs to put on the table, I believe, as part of the master plan, discussions of other functional uses not mentioned in the document. For example, one, consideration of what may be desired from a disaster handling capability. Now, that could have some bearing in terms of the design of buildings or garages or something like that. Secondly, what about post office capability? That needs to be, be thought about at some point. Thirdly, the heritage collection, display, storage and work area needs to be addressed someplace. And I think the fourth one here might be the location of Caltrain Station, thinking about the restoration of weekday service that they promised us in 2014, that might draw, it might draw vans and bicycles actually using the station here. So those kinds of things ought to be at least thought about. The citation of different studies to provide background of what's gone on before, all needs to be verified, as Councilman Wees mentioned. Besides the library size numbers, I also focused on the amount of storage space, 14,700 square feet is something that ought to be verified. But in the case of the library, we need to keep in mind that these numbers were predicated on serving a geographical area of over 16,000 people, or twice the size of the town of Atherton. I think the library size is something that should be determined early in the process. It may be like Portola Valley, the council will have to make a decision saying, okay, we don't want to be any larger than a certain size and so many square feet. That would help the planners in incising other facilities, particularly when it comes to determining meetings, meeting room capacity and location. So I suggested it be an early agenda item for the town center committee to tackle. And of the scope of work, I concur with Kerry about the geographical locations. I think that number six under scope of work, small group presentations, need to present the issues in straightforward way and allow all the participants to hear the ideas of everyone that attends these meetings, unlike the way another group conducted their meetings. And there ought to be summaries reflecting an accurate account of these meetings that's available on the town's website. And number eight, rail corridor should include specific mention of the Caltrain modernization program and the possible use of the corridor by high speed rail in 2030. It's not going to happen next week, it's going to be out there, if they ever do it. And other, other services to be included, the monthly meeting agendas, I concur, certainly think that the committees need to be involved and processed there. And I think that we may, you may want to have consultant or the, or the consultants available for the small group meetings might want to have a, be thinking about that, that where you want to have an expert, unless the town staff feels they can provide the expertise on that. The question may arise as to funding, one of the goals of the master plan is to increase the credibility and certainty that town is behind and supports carrying out a town center master plan in order to encourage private donations towards the project. I think that that ought to be, you know, whoever puts on this ought to understand that, that's one of the things that we're after here. Okay, I think that covers it.
Council Vice Mayor?
Sure, I have a few comments. First off, I agree with the previous comments and would add to it that, you know, the size of the facilities, while we have some guesstimates of what other people have suggested in the past, and we did do some analysis for the new town center, which I think was pretty valid, the thing that stuck out to me was the size of the library. And as we know, the library issue and the size of it became a lightning bolt or lightning rod for criticism. And we don't, this, this thing needs to be a success, and so we need to make sure that issues that had been raised before really need to be, you know, tamped down. And so I think that the sizes of the library, whether it's, you know, 10,000 square feet or, you know, to 13,000, you know, I don't ever, I never would condone a 13,000 square foot library. I know that they've talked about a second story one, but in meetings we had, we talked about 10,000 max. But, but again, I wouldn't predetermine what the sizes are because as Jerry also pointed out, you know, we need to probably get a little bit more input and staff from the library system, who's also included in the staff definition, needs to participate in that. I'm glad that in the overview section, there's, there are comments about that they're going to come up with multiple plans and we're all going to get a chance to weigh in on those. I think that that's very, very important. And, and we had, you know, when we first talked about this just last, in the last meeting, you know, people from the surrounding community did come in here and say, you know, we want to make sure that the facility that we're coming into fits into this neighborhood, look and feel, similar to some of the buildings down at the end of Laurel that Menlo Park has built, they look like they're essentially, you know, two story houses. So they fit into the neighborhood, you know, we need to fit into this neighborhood and not, and not become an eyesore for the people that are living around it. So, so again, you know, adding some words in about the look, matching in with the look and feel of the neighborhood and making sure we get the feeling for the neighborhood is very, very important and we discussed that.
Can I, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Just really quickly. This is for the master plan of the site, it's not for the architectural. And the architectural direction would take into that.
But there needs to, but there needs, it needs to be, set us the buffers for the community again.
Right.
We had Mrs. Janz here just, just last month saying, we want to make sure we have this thing.
I just wanted to know.
Okay, fine.
Because we're getting into architectural detail.
No, I think, I think that something like that could be an overview. Sort of, sort of sets the stage, you know, in terms of.
Okay, it does, it does say let's be consistent with Atherton's role and character and mitigate adverse impacts on nearby residents.
I would be a little stronger.
Yeah.
I would recommend.
Well, let's, let's wordsmith it because.
We're not talking about mitigation, we're talking more about the, the fitting in, as you said, Bill, and I, I use the term low key and with the same sort of idea that it ought to really fit the.
Consistent, it must, it must fit in.
With the existing, with the existing neighborhood.
Okay.
We can't have local opposition that's right here, I mean, that would be the worst.
Absolutely not, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, so, so then moving on, you know, I'm glad we're going to have multiple items for consideration before we're going to finalize one. It seemed that when I was going through one through 14, and maybe it's kind of written in, but when I looked at one through 14 in section B and then got into section C, it looks like the council is only getting one meeting and isn't necessarily involved in kind of getting an overview and then participating and looking at the multiple options. And I know that when we, I think that that's an important part. And, and one of the reasons why I think it's an important part is if we have to just look back just 12 months ago, we had a number of projects that were going on, and we did try and get outreach to a number of the meetings. And in fact, you know, one organization, the library organization, went out and hung things on doors, called everybody, et cetera, and people didn't come to the meetings. And then at the end, there's opposition. And so what we need to do though, I think, is have more meetings, and I'm concerned because having that consultant come here and talk to whoever, or go to community meetings to talk to whoever, is time and money on their part. And we don't want to have, you know, a contract where suddenly we're going to have change notice after, change notice after change notice. We also are coming up onto the summer season and people start leaving for the hills back in, you know, in, in, in May. So there may be a need for a secondary or tertiary meeting. And so I, I guess, two, two points I'm trying to make, there should be, I think that there may be a need for more meetings and the consultant needs to understand that that's going to be a requirement, should be part of their bid. Secondly, I think that the council needs to be written in to at least get some additional updates, because reading this, and maybe it's implied, but reading this, I didn't see that the council was actually part of it. It looked more like we were going to get briefed at the end, this is what the public wants. And I just, I don't think that. So if I've misread it, I apologize, but I'd like to see it clear. On number eight, yes?
Could, could you make a suggestion so that we can put that in there, how you would like to make that clear?
Five, maybe Mayor, I can make a comment on that one. This is a committee established by the city council, it's got two members of the council sitting on it. And the, the charge of the CCAC is to actually create the master plan, recommend a master plan for the city council. So at some point, the council's going to get to see that, but they're not involved.
But it should be at the beginning, it should, we should be meeting at the beginning, understand what they're doing. After you guys make your selection, you should come and we should have some sort of information session with them. And then as they're getting their alternatives, they need to come back to council as well before a final decision is made. And so.
Bill, what about asking to have the item as a consent agenda item on a, on a regular basis? That way we could pull it off and ask questions and it could be a report, be a report.
A report.
Saying, okay, this is what we accomplished here, the issues we're dealing with, or something like that. And we could pull it off then and, you know, get more discussion.
But there needs to be feedback. And my concern is this, is that, again, there won't be, I'm hopeful this is not the case, but it could be the case, that there's not going to be enough, or there'll be last minute community unhappiness. And so, you know, I'd like to, you know, from my part, try and make sure that we're, we're, we're doing it. You know, the committee needs to look at sizing, it needs to work regularly with the people and play some games back and forth with the, with looking at what ifs. But, but as they come down to the two or three alternatives, they need to come to the council.
Well, as the Vice Mayor indicated, you could have monthly regular reports as part of the council agenda if you wanted.
That's fine, I'm just explaining what, what I'm looking at.
But I would also suggest perhaps that if the council's concerned with the direction that the CCAC is going, you are free to call a joint meeting of the council and CCAC to kind of.
Redirect them.
Redirect them.
Rein them in.
And I would encourage you to do so, so you get a handle on, on the issue.
Well, I, again, having, having extra meetings means time and money on the part of the consultant, and so they need to understand there'd be more meetings and more reporting potentially, or a few extra meetings, both in the community as well as here. Again, on the community, you know, I, I agree with Kerry's comments, but we're going to have to have more than just one meeting. And depending on the timing, you may need to have meetings at the beginning of the summer and then a follow-up meeting at the end of the summer. So please think this through, because we don't want to get hit with, with additional change notices.
May, may I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
In item number four, be, item number four, four before, during the master plan phase, meet monthly with town staff and the community center advisory committee with meetings and meetings with council as, as required. Because that's where, they're going to be meeting with the town staff and the CCAC on a monthly basis.
But if I was bidding it, Madam Mayor, as required, it's like you're asking verblank check and I wouldn't give you that.
Well, okay, so they're, they're already meeting with the town staff and the CCAC.
And combining item five, there's.
Take an active role in scheduled scoping meetings with various stakeholder groups and the general public to define goals.
Kind of broad.
It's very broad, it's very broad. So.
Perhaps they could meet with the council upon selection, and there could be a topic where they could poll and get some feeling for what the council was. And as they come up with their three alternatives, they could come back and there would be a required, not only community outreach, but there would be a required presentation and then the final one. So I, I can see several meetings with the council, at a minimum two, if not three.
It seems to me that you're trying to make it a council-led project rather than the community center advisory committee led project with, like other committees come back to council on a regular basis for reports. Maybe you could have the community center advisory committee report to council on a monthly basis. And, and that would be where direction would be. I don't think that the, the consultant necessarily would have to do that, be there.
Well, if I was running the project, I just could put myself in their position. I'd want to go to the guys that are going to make the final decision, and I would want to get their input. And then when I came up with my three alternatives, I'd like to judge what they said and then do my refinement before I come back with a final product. That's three meetings. That's my input. That's not handling the sizing and how many offices we have and things like that that will go on in the regular CCAC committees. So I, I don't think that, that we're having, we're negating the need for a CCAC, there's lots of work that goes on in between there.
Can I, can I ask staff, Lisa, how have you seen this work in other jurisdictions? Do other cities create a resident committee with council members to do a project and bring back house? How does it work?
The other jurisdictions I work in do not have a council representative on the committees. It's a citizen-led committee, a council member may be in the audience observing, but they haven't been necessarily assigned to the committee. And I don't know, Mike, if you have experience in other communities, I also have a suggestion to add, I was at a conference recently, they talked a lot about, you know, the other generations using social networking, and we might want to add something about, you know, thinking outside the box about, nobody comes to our meetings, well, maybe we need to reach out to them using technology. And maybe the consultant can propose how they would use current technology to get more community input.
Certainly, good idea, excellent idea.
Thoughts on that?
How the, I, I think that what we want to do is address Councilmember Whitmer's desire to be more actively involved as a full council than what it appears that this item, you know, the scope of services outlines here, although it does indicate that monthly meetings with the CCAC would be held and then we can have reports out from the CCAC to full council.
Again, I'm only asking for, for an information gathering session, and that could be a joint meeting. And then I'm asking for a review at the, when there are the three designs, and then the one, I'm not micromanaging as might be implied, and I'm anticipating that, you know, in hearing that people are implying that. That's not, I don't think asking for two to three meetings is asking too much on potentially a $20 million investment on the part of the town. That we all need to be ahead, that we all need to have, we, all five of us need to be saying, we're all behind this because we're going to need to get the backing of the community.
Perhaps I could make a suggestion, it doesn't necessarily need to be something as part of this RFP, but if your direction to staff is that as the CCAC moves along, the council would like to be involved at those three key intervals, we can set those up as joint meetings with the CCAC, so the council is involved and you get the same presentation and can provide feedback at both the initial phases, when they get their proposals, and whatever third phase the council would like to be.
Yeah, but that may be an alternative, that's fine. What I'm trying to do is make sure the scope of work is clear so that whoever wins this, they're not disappointed or, and they can get their expected margins and that they can get, and they're not going to be hitting us with change notices.
The best way to do that then is to combine them.
Combine them.
Either combine them where you say there'd be three meetings, that's all.
Well, because we've already indicated that they're going to be meeting monthly. So it's up to us to, you know, who's, you know, how many people and who attends those meetings.
But I, I think Bill raises a, a good point here, that we don't want to suddenly find that we have to approve more money for something. Maybe, maybe it would be helpful to have them provide a schedule as to if they, we're going to be required to attend a small group meeting, or, or a two hour meeting, or a four hour meeting, or something like that, what would be the, the cost, incremental costs? We have some visibility when we look at the various alternatives, visibility as to, we make more deliberate choices in the future knowing what the cost might be.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, anyway, moving on then, so I'll leave it to, to the staff to make the amendments, they've heard my, my request. Like Jerry, you know, the electrification is going to happen, or is very close to happening, it's more eminent than the high speed rail. And so the Caltrain modernization needs to be added to number eight on section B. Let's see, I don't know if we're going to put our normal contract on the back of this, you know, of course, every time we set out a major RFP, I ask about the contract, it wasn't included here, but I assume it's the normal one that we need to update.
Well, it's not included because we don't have any proposal yet. We never create a contract.
You normally throw, throw a contract in with the RFP, at least you have been in the past.
We have shown representatives, but since it's the same one over and over.
I know, I'd like it was to clean it up, I keep saying that.
I like, I like the cleanliness already.
I like, it's got a lot of problems, as I point out at every meeting. Anyway, no problem. Section eight, the evaluation. I think really, I'd like to see on the evaluation, you know, a couple things for, for the group to consider. One is, there might be some need for, and, and some bonus points, I think, if, if you're a local firm versus a far away firm. So, so I realize we're saying, you know, understanding of, understanding of the project plan and things like that, but we should be giving preference, I think, to, to somebody that's local in the community that, that actually understands the town. I know some of these guys that may be bidding have already worked here a little bit, and that, that, that could count. I do think that 20% on the technical teams, technical experience, which is item evaluation number two, you have 20% on that, I think that's a little high, because I also believe that they're all going to have on paper, good experience. They're not going to be putting them forward if they didn't. And so, you know, I think when you look at firm qualifications, the team members, technical experience, et cetera, I think that you might be have too much there, and, and, you know, you might want to put it somewhere else. I'd put it on, on references, and I would ask for references of the last N number of projects. Not let them select projects that were, that they want to tell us, because no one's going to give us a bad experience, they're only going to tell us the ones where everybody loves them. So we should be able to get a, you know, the last two years worth of projects that they worked on, and, and be able to double check those, those references at our leisure, at our convenience, and, and help make that into, and I would put that number, that last item of, of evaluation from 10% then to 20%, because really, it's how happy we're going to be, and the references will, will give us a better picture, as opposed to somebody throwing a bunch of resumes that are in, in a, in a RFP, so. I think that took me to the end, thank you for your indulgence.
So I'm going to, I'll try to summarize a little bit. I've heard a number of our council members talk about in the background, page three of nine, that the historical analysis of, like, the town center task force, May 18th, 2010, report shows, you know, X number of square feet, and the library shows X number of square feet. I'm curious as to why we really absolutely even need that in this, this document, I guess. Is that to, because it's not an architectural document, we're not build, asking them to build the buildings, it's more of a site plan layout, reconfiguration of the land that we have, and, and citing buildings and uses of buildings as they relate to redirection of traffic flow and mitigation of noise and traffic from our surrounding areas. So is that, Mike, can I ask you, is, is that absolutely necessary to add in there? Can we just delete it and say that the, you know, programming information that we've developed to date is on the town's website?
Yes, I mean, it's certainly not necessary. Staff included it just because it was dad, that was available.
Yeah.
That was really all we're trying to do. So if, if it's the wish of the council to delete it, that doesn't create a problem.
I don't know how anybody feels about that, it just seems to me that it's, it's, it can be misleading, that, you know, we've got it in our head that we're going to build a 13,000 square foot library without, and I think the, the part of the, part of the vetting of this project is the community outreach and the development of what is it that the community is wanting as far as the size of a library or the functionality of, you know, how we're going to operate our town offices and planning and building and, and the, the whole of that.
Well, if I could, move on to that. I think that, you know, while, I, I think we should put a caveat that the sizes are not appropriate or not firm, you might want to go with a smaller size on the library, but I, I think the size of the library or the size of the office buildings and the number of people that could or not be in there, or, or you could say the number, they need, they need some information to, when they're bidding this, to determine what the traffic impact is going to be. And I think that that is a valid point, and that's one of the things that, again, when we spoke about this just last month, some of the concerns from the people is how much traffic is it going to be here? And, and we've got questions today from people who are complaining about the construction traffic. So the size gives an indication of how many people might be coming in, but I do think that we don't want to prejudice their thoughts on, hey, we're expecting to build a 13 or 10,000 square foot library.
The, the amount of people that we're expecting to come here is pretty much the amount of people that have been coming here, because it's.
So we should maybe put that information in here.
The amount of people that we have, I mean, we're not, we're not expanding anything, I mean, it's the services and the headcount of the, the existing functionality of our police and, and staff.
While we're considering putting a lab or in the park, the approved size that the council made was 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, well, Lisa, would you like to make a statement?
I just think word of magnitude for the architects to understand is it's about a 10,000 square foot building, it, it doesn't matter to them at this master plan level, whether it's 10,000, 9,800, 15,000 square feet. But they need to know it's, it's a ballpark range, and it's not 100,000 square feet, five story building.
I see.
You know, so just a range, I think would be helpful.
Maybe we could just do.
Well, I wouldn't start with 10,000 square feet, I'd start with 6,000.
Yeah, I mean, Portola Valley started with 6,000.
You could give a range, it would be. You could give a range, it would be helpful for the architects.
Let's start with 10,000.
You know, we give a range and we say to be determined size.
So I mean, can, can we get consensus that we just need to rewrite that last section of that first paragraph on page three of nine to delete where it talks about the TCF report of May 10, shows departmental space?
Oh, we could just reference it as on the website and then say, the numbers within those reports may not be indicative of the council's current needs with respect to the library size used.
Yeah, I, I would like that.
That's fine.
Okay, good. And again, just to, in the overview section, to really, you know, clearly say that the, the objective of taking the finite amount of land that we've got here, the four and a half acres, and using it in out-of-the-box thinking to redirect traffic and traffic flow to make it nicer for our surrounding neighbors in our higher neighborhood and for the most efficient and safe. Because the way the three streets coming together now are not safe. So that, everything else I agree with our council members except for the evaluation criteria. I know that a lot has been said about it, that there's been no real specifics. And I really think that in this regard, that we should depend upon the professionals and the staff, what is best practices, what is generally accepted business practices and going back, so.
I, I disagree with you on the references. I agree with Bill in terms of, of looking at maybe a segment of time or something like that. Because if I were going to give you a reference, I'd give you my three best references.
Okay, so it's qualitative, it's qualitative references, it's, I was looking at the evaluation criteria, the percentages, that was it. So the, the references from our ad hoc committee, subcommittee, we talked about that, we said, we're going to check all references, not, not the references that they.
We're going to do our own references.
Yeah, yeah. So it doesn't matter what it is.
I never gave references, it wouldn't be superb, Dan.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if really you're not talking about changing the evaluation criteria, you're talking about paragraph seven above it.
Right, okay.
Where it says, provide a minimum of three client references that have working experience, furnish the name, title, et cetera, of the person who's most knowledgeable. You could, you know, Councilmember Widmer's point is, you know, is, is potentially a good one, that you could easily change this one to say, it could be three or four or five or the last 12 months. If you do 12 months, you might get one project though.
Because of similar.
It's like two years, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, you could say, submit all, you know, references for all projects in the last two years.
Two years?
It might be two projects.
Yeah, the last five years.
Five years, okay, five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then I, I can suggest that we change the rating criteria.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah. Provide.
Those were two separate things.
Yeah.
Changing the criteria is a different.
The last five, uh, references, references over the last five years of similar projects.
Just a clarification, I think when I hear the council says, really, we'd want them to list all the projects they've done in the last five years.
Right, yes.
So then that way the staff can, can.
We can check.
Check.
Well, staff and the, and the, you're going to farm that out, lots of people can call or you have two different guys call at the same time, you know.
Well, what we did with the town center task force, we had all these candidates and each member took a section and, and called people. Okay. All right, so I think that we're pretty clear on that?
I think we're pretty clear.
So can, can I get a motion to approve the RFP as modified?
Absolutely. As moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That stings, so it passes. Thank you. Going on to item number 24. It's an informational staff report only. Our Public Works Superintendent Steve Tyler and Mike Ashwadi, Community Services Director, will get the report regarding startup of weddings at Hope or Palmer Park. Mike?
Yes. Per council request, this report was prepared to seek council direction regarding the resumption of weddings at Hope or Palmer Park. As you will recall, in December of 2011, the city council discontinued weddings in the park. And this action was taken in anticipation of design and construction activities that would occur as a result of the proposed library. But as a result of the November 2012 elections, it was decided, determined that there were no, there wouldn't be a library in the park. So if council director have to resume weddings at Hope or Palmer Park and what we have in here suggesting of, you know, beginning July 1st, what would happen is that we would immediately begin accepting reservations after July 1st. And then we will also be preparing and bringing forward in future council meeting recommendations with regards to these for, for weddings. And we will also bring back recommendations with regards to solicitation of contract staff to perform the tasks necessary to support events in the park.
Do I have any members of the council that has any questions for staff at this time before comments?
I have comments.
Okay. Any member of the public?
I have questions.
Okay, clarifying questions?
Yeah. On the report, and thank you for giving us the spreadsheet, et cetera, you show in the, in the spreadsheet that's at the end, you're taking vendor, 50% vendor booking fee and I realize you gave a range, either Steve or yourself, Mike, of, you know, what the catering cost would be and things like that. But I guess the question is, what was the catering fees that we, that we actually experienced when we did have the caterer and we were running the weddings? That's a question, first question number one, if you could clarify that 125. And then secondly, you talk about there'd be something on the order of 24 weddings per month. And then the last time we talked about this, we said, well, there's a finite wedding.